Today's the 27th, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission. Everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin, would you like to do both?
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bardas?
Here.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Commissioner Pasalacqua?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Okay, so next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda or motions to approve?
Move to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. Approval of the minutes of August 23rd, 2022. Does anyone have any changes or motions?
Move to approve.
Second. Excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved, and then the minutes of September 13th, 2022. Any changes to the minutes or motions to approve?
Second.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought that was the dead silence. My apologies.
I was giving you all the chance.
My apologies.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Communications, we have newest Planning Michigan. Were there any other communications?
No, the one thing I'll note, Joe gave me my post-it that I had. The election of officers memo that talks about the liaisons, the chamber does meet the third Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00. Just as an FYI.
Thank you. And now is the time for citizens' comments. I don't see anybody in the audience, but this is the time for items not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your concerns, and will try and address them during discussions. Do we have any citizens for comments? Okay, no, moving on. All right, so our amendment conversation, or our ordinance conversations. First one is outdoor seating. Who's going to lead us in this one?
So Megan's going to do the leading on these items.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Megan Mastin-Minock from Carlisle-Wartman Associates. I know many of you quite well, some of you somewhat, and then Commissioner Hamame? Did I say your last name?
Hamame.
Hamame, it's nice to meet you, and I'm really happy to be part of bringing these to you because in my short stint here as the interim community development director, these were all things that were on the list of things that needed to be done. And so the first one was looking at zoning ordinance amendments for outdoor seating. Just, I'm going to assume that you've read and consumed things. I'm going to ask for questions first on each of these items, and then we'll hit the highlights from, gleaning from that what questions are, if things need to be reviewed, and then ask for comments and then go over edits. So that was the process I was going to use. Does that, does anybody have any suggestions, or does that, would that work?
That sounds beautiful.
Okay. So for, just in general for the outdoor seating, currently, outdoor seating for any restaurant, bar, anybody serving food, it's a special land use. And for those of you who were on the Planning Commission when the black hop came through, so that added another month and a half to their development process, probably. So in talking with, in talking with Kristin, that was one of the things that wanted to put before you to kind of, again, help to implement the downtown design guidelines, but also to make some things a little easier. So really, although the text is long, the simple change is that that's going from a special land use to an accessory use to a principal use, wherever there's a restaurant or bar, place that serves food, in order to keep that, and part of that is to have a vibrant street life, help your downtown, and help your corridors, keeping in line with your master plan and the downtown plan. With that overview, did anybody have any questions about those, either the background or the zoning ordinance amendments themselves?
I have one.
Okay.
I do, I did look back in my notes from when we talked about it, and we did talk about having regulations in place for our outdoor seating stuff, and as I scrolled through, I don't see anything really in our ordinance. So I guess my question is, does it make sense to take it off of a special land use without having those other regulations in place as to how that affects parking or setbacks or any of that kind of stuff?
So, a lot of client communities that I work with will have this as a principal land use, but then they'll also have regulations for those, such as, and Kristin and I were talking before the meeting about this, whether you wanted to increase parking or not, that's, I can see pros and cons of either way in terms of requiring or to not require, since it typically would be a seasonal use. Another thing is to make it, to have that use, have it be an outdoor service area, and then have that have a separate permitting process that can be renewed every year. So that they can do it, they have to set these up, like a temporary event. So you have people come back every year, sort of temporary events for Berkeley Days or whatnot. Can set it up that same way. And then also, third thing is, there's other things for outdoor seating areas to think about in terms of, what do the barriers look like, especially if it's going temporarily into an outdoor parking, into an outdoor parking space or an outdoor parking lot? How do you make, typically your restrooms are inside the building, so if you have somebody who needs barrier-free access, how do they get up into that building? And requirements for ramps, things like that. And go, especially through the pandemic, lots of communities have dealt with this, and I could bring back probably three different versions of those outdoor seating areas. From Northville's is very, very, very specific, and with a lot, a lot, a lot of things, to something that's very minimal, and could consider them in conjunction with this. Or you could save that for when you do your zoning ordinance rewrite, and then look at, and then have this here for this point in time, if you have more folks coming. Because that, your temporary uses outdoors that are through a council resolution end in December, so you do have a little bit of a push on that. Kristin, you were saying that that might be looking at being extended, or?
We'll see. At this point, we have to take that to council still. The other thing we could do besides the temporary is an administrative review by staff with provisions included. And I think the main things would be whether or not we're going to require parking. Probably want to think about the ramps, I think are a good point, if we're encountering any curbs. The passable area on the sidewalk, if this isn't including a sidewalk. Panic hardware is required for the enclosures, if they're serving alcohol, so that people can get in and out in emergency. We could just include like a small list of, I would think basic would be the way to go at this point, since we're looking at, kind of, looking at everything again fairly soon, just to keep that covered.
How do they do parking? Like, so our parking has written so many, one spot per 60 square feet of usable floor area. Is the outdoor seating considered usable floor area?
So in communities I've worked with, no, I haven't seen any included for parking requirements. I don't know if you have a different experience? I have never seen it, and as I recollect, when we were looking at the, an amendment for the Aquitats Building, we were looking at the parking spaces, and the outdoor seating wasn't computed into that parking space, I think. Because they had an outdoor seating space, but, which they later asked to be rescinded.
So I was not a part of the discussion when, when this was first brought to light in the discussion that was had regarding the regulations. So I'm going to try to keep my comments to a minimum. But I do think that we do need some regulations. Are you suggesting there are no regulations in any of the sections? For example, different like hours of operation for outdoor dining versus indoor? Music, entertainment, volumes? Like, are there, is there no, currently no regulations for outdoor seating at all? Because I understood we had that, it was just a special land use, and with the special land use, you can attach all of the conditions that you want to it. We're just going to make it a permitted use, then there's literally nothing.
So there's no regulations in the ordinance right now for outdoor seating? It's, you have the special land use provisions, right? But we also have our nuisance ordinance, which would regulate things like noise. It, it would seem odd to have an outdoor seating area that serves alcohol, and the indoors open till 2:00, and the outdoors only open till 10:00 or 11:00, I, I mean?
I would think it would depend on the location and proximity to residences.
I, I can't think of any downtown areas where they closed the outdoor seating earlier by regulation of the city versus keeping the inside open later, and that really becomes an enforcement problem for us, I think. Yeah, I'm trying to think of how we would enforce that, if it's in the zoning ordinance and we're relying on public safety, because we wouldn't have code enforcement working, you know, on a Saturday at 11:00 or whatever the time might be.
Well, I mean, you'd get complaints.
Well, right, we would get complaints, but we couldn't go out and investigate the complaint, really, because we were not going to be there at the time that the violation is happening. I, these outdoor seating areas really enhance our downtown. We want a lively streetscape and a lively downtown. And it's important for us to make sure that we're maintaining, I think, proper clearances on sidewalks and safety features for pedestrians and users of the outdoor seating area alike. But I would really be reluctant to put additional requirements on outdoor seating that would not be in place for the same operation indoors.
Would, am I correct in assuming that these outdoor seating areas would, would have to go along with some sort of site plan review process?
So the way, so Megan talked about the temporary use permit, which we could do. We do do temporary permits for a lot of different events. We could go that route, or we could do an administrative site plan review. And we could, I could check the provisions that the commission decides are appropriate against the site plan that's submitted.
Or you could even have an outdoor service area that's approved by administrative site plan that has a renewal once a year, that has different provisions. And then if someone's, if, if you have parking problems, if you have noise problems, things like that, then when they would come back every year to reinstall their outdoor seating area, then that, then you could take care of those things as you go forward.
So are the temporary permit and the administrative site plan review used regardless if it's, regardless of special land use or principal land use?
Especially in use, you don't have an administrative review. It has to come to Planning Commission, it has to, and it has to be noticed within, to everybody within 300 feet. You know, you're a unique place in that almost all of your areas where a restaurant would go, but up to either an institutional use or residential use. You, you don't have, you don't have a lot of buffer that, that comes along then. Other things that you could do within whatever method you use for approval, you could make sure that there's not amplified music, or that amplified music only goes until X time. You could, so I think you could put some parameters around noise. And then you could also look for some parameters around any other nuisance that you were looking at in terms of, you could look at somewhat hours of operations or cross-referencing back to your noise ordinance or your nuisance ordinance. So that's evident to the, a lot of times when you have those cross-references, it's not evident to the person who's the, who's getting the application. And so in some way that they know the rules also.
So what happens to existing special land uses that had conditions attached to them?
Those would still, those run with the land.
So they would have conditions, but new?
New ones would.
New establishments wouldn't?
New establishments wouldn't, so?
Under principal land use or accessory use?
Yes, unless you chose to put rules around it, which, what I'm sensing from the commission is that you would rather, you would rather have some rules around this if we're taking it out of special land use. Because when you're taking it out of special land use, you use, you lose that ability to kind of twist an arm or control the circumstances.
What, what type of regulations did we attach? What type of conditions, Kristin, do you have any idea?
That we would have attached previously to special land uses?
To special land uses, do you know?
I can't think of anything. I don't know if you can, I mean, we haven't seen a ton of these, at least in my time on the Planning Commission, we didn't, but I don't ever remember attaching a condition.
I mean, the only thing I can think of is the brewery, and I think we asked that like music not be outside, it was only be inside.
The lights not shine.
But the lights are covered by?
For sure.
The lighting section.
The lights were already covered. You would give them an exception, actually, for the light.
I can't remember seeing a ton of outdoor, because there's just not a lot of room for that.
And a lot of these are the couple seats that the restaurants have in front, along the sidewalk. There's, there's just not a lot of room for them to expand to the rear, you're right. Especially if they would have to take up required parking spaces.
So like, for example, like that Black Hop Brewery, the only reason we saw that was because it was a special land use, because they had outdoor seating, correct?
I believe so, that was my.
Yeah, yeah, because otherwise it would have been administrative cycling, because all they were doing were changing, they were changing, they were changing the paint, and they were doing interior renovations.
Right, and I'm, I'm reading the, like, the letter that you wrote, I think, Megan. Yeah, you had wrote this letter, and the recommendations, and as I recall, the lighting and the restriction on hours and the noise levels. So those three things were probably something that we attached on to the approval, conditional approval.
Yeah, and, and the lighting was because they were proposing the string lighting?
Yeah.
And your lighting regulations say that you can't see the bulb?
Right.
And so, found that that, we recommended, and you found that that wasn't going to be a nuisance, and so could be allowed.
So, so special land use really only adds time to the process currently?
No, it adds time, additional scrutiny by the public, and also you have discretionary standards instead of non-discretionary standards, and that's actually, that's a big deal. Because in a discretionary standard, you're using your judgment and can say, I think this is being nuisance, the noise would be too loud, the lighting would be too much, things like that. Whereas if it's a non-discretionary standard, what you are looking at is the foot candle is this much, this far, you know, on the property, and the sound is this decibel at the, at the property line or 10 feet away. So that's, that, that's, that's the difference. And then you also, so you have a greater ability to say no, or to vary things in terms of what's going on in the ground.
And that's only because principal land use, and I guess, I'm not sure, principal versus accessory, the exact difference here, but because we don't have any standards specific to outdoor seating, they fall under the umbrella of many other items that we?
It would just?
And they would continue to fall under that umbrella. Lighting would still apply, even if you attached specific standards to outdoor seating areas.
Sure, although, I mean, I guess it's, would, would there be anything new, though, to anticipate for future? That if it's not addressed, like the seat, or parking is one, is another one, I guess. If it's not addressed specifically as a principal in use with a discretionary standard, a non-discretionary standard, like what position does that put us in?
So the non-discretionary standard for parking would be, you have S amount of floor space, you need X amount of? You, you have X amount of floor space, you need Y, Y amount of parking spaces.
Okay.
And so those would rule no matter what, and so?
Even if we felt outdoor seating was going to be impeding upon available parking or resident streets within the side?
Well, it couldn't take up required parking spaces, because the business would be required to have those spaces.
Correct, but what if there was some situation in the future that's unknown? That, that then, then we would have no discretionary ability to say, oh, gosh, well, you know, you're going to be having like double the amount of seating outdoors now, but not the appropriate amount of parking, but it works for whatever situation they're in.
Right, and then they would either ask for a variance?
Okay.
Or also, if it was?
Hopefully everyone follows.
A number of different, a number of different times, you would say the zoning ordinance isn't working, we should look at that. And that's one of the reasons that all these amendments are in front of you.
But he wouldn't look at it, because if it's a principal accessory use, we will never see it.
You will never see it.
The residents will never get notice of it.
Right.
It would all be handled administratively.
Yes.
But that's very typical. I can't think of another city that does outdoor seating as a special land use.
I mean, personally, I'm okay with taking away from a special land use. I just also think that we should have sign, and I know we're going to rewrite our, our whole ordinances. But I feel like there should be something so that everyone knows what's expected. So, you know, I don't think it needs to be super crazy like Northville, where there's lots of regulations in there, but I think when a, a business looks at it, they go, okay, this is what I can do. And the residents can look at it and go, that's what they can do. And, and everybody knows this is what you're allowed to do, instead of?
So, so right now, do we have an idea of standards in place for, let's say, outdoor patios or, you know, whatever else this covers under the umbrella? I know it's also retail shops. Is that something that's drafted?
No.
Or thought of?
The only thing that's drafted right now is changing it from a special land use to a principal use. But what I would suggest is, based on this conversation, is that I go back, find some examples, and based on our conversation, bring you a method to do that. I think the thing that I'm, the, the, the decision point that I would be interested in hearing from you about is, would you want that decision to come to this body? Or to be handled administratively? So that's one question. And the second question, is it something that's done once, and they can keep going? Or is it some sort of license that's renewed from year to year? So those are two questions.
I'll tell you my opinion, I don't care if it's handled administratively, as long as we have some regulations. And I don't think they need to come back every year once they're approved.
I agree.
I mean, it'd kind of defeat the purpose of taking it out of a special land use if we're going to then make them come back every year, and if they forget to come back, then they can't open, and then we're rushing, they have special meetings, so they can open. It just seems like it'd be more of a, more trouble than it's worth.
What would that process look like, though? Because it would just be?
Administrative, you're right.
It just would be administrative.
So it wouldn't be a big deal.
So it'd be like approving a business license, almost, right?
I think it'd be a good check, just in case there are any issues, it'd be a good way to, to, you know, hey, we've been getting a lot of complaints about the noise, 1:00 in the morning, you know?
So as an example, we do a process every year for approval of people that want to do things for the Dream Cruise, and it's usually the same businesses every year. It's an application and like a one-page diagram of their setup, and?
Is there a fee?
There's a fee, yeah. So it would be reviewed?
Charging the businesses to come back every year to continue on the current process.
I mean, I can't think of what it is off the top of my head, but it's a pretty nominal fee. It's like less, less than $50, I think. And it's reviewed by, for, in the Woodward case, me and public safety.
How often do they have to, how often do you have to look at like a business license or something?
A business license, one time.
They don't go back for any inspections or anything like that again?
They haven't, there's a, an inspection process that they're running now. I think it's like every, somewhere every year, somewhere every two years, but it's really just inspections for fire safety. It's not an inspection to make sure that, that things are set up properly for outdoor seating or something like that, for example.
And this outdoor seating could be in front or back of the business? Like on 12 Mile, I'm just thinking of like a large parking lot in the back. There could potentially be outdoor seating out back instead of just out front, correct?
If they had the spaces to lose to put in outdoor seating, which is going to be, I, yeah.
A smaller business may, though, and then they could double or triple their?
And they couldn't take from municipal parking, right?
No.
And does it include like rooftop? Or that would still be a special land use, because it'd be changing a building?
No, I mean, that, we'd consider that outdoor seating, like 24 seconds has the rooftop seating.
Like if a new business came, or?
They, they could do that.
Okay, so, sounds like I go back, add some rules, looking for it to be an administrative one-time permit that includes regulations about basic nuisance, barrier-free, and then maybe fencing for areas where alcohol might be served, so that dovetails with state law.
I, I would think a site plan would be appropriate as part of your review.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
Okay, okay, anything else?
Is everybody comfortable with not limiting hours outdoors?
I think so, because they're going to have to abide by the noise and the light.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be an alcohol establishment. It could be, somebody wants to have their fruit, midnight fruit sailors, I don't know, like, fruit stand at midnight, like a special sale or something. I, I don't know, like, I'm just thinking it could be any business, it doesn't have to be a loud business.
My only concern is we're taking away the ability for residents to come in. And then we're potentially having businesses stay open till 2:00 in the morning next door to them. I, I don't know, that's my hesitancy.
And I, and I, I see that point, right? Because our noise ordinance technically, I think, starts at 11:00, right? But if, if they're, have the ability to have an, or outdoor dining, there is a certain level of noise that comes with that, that if your neighbor was doing, would be too loud, right? So I, I get that. At this juncture, I think we don't have a ton that are open till 2:00 in the morning either, so?
I think you could, though, if it was directly adjacent to residential, the portion of the parking lot or area, that, that could be restricted to, let's say, 11:00 PM. And whether it's in the front or the side, and it's not direct? Um, and whether it's in the front or the side and it's not directly adjacent again. Um, then you could, then that could be the same hours of operation as the, as, as the restaurant or eating establishment. So, for instance, Black Hop, which doesn't have residential directly behind it. They could have that outdoor seating where they were, but I just had dinner at the Green Lantern with my dad. Um, if their eating area was in the rear, where it was adjacent to, um, adjacent to the residential. Then I think what I'm proposing is that that could only be open till eleven and that would have to close, but they could have it on the side of the front. Cause it's not the portion of the lot that's closest to the residential. Does that?
And maybe I'm making something out of nothing. I mean, have, do you guys who were here for a while and Kristen, when this was a special land use? Did people come to meetings and object and voice concerns and, and is that something you? I don't, I mean, I don't wanna make something out of nothing, but that's how I would feel.
I think it was just hot lots, right? They wanted some seating for a sub shop or something in one of their buildings. It, it's not like we get hundreds of these a year. It's very, very few.
Yeah, I can't think of it.
Even with the, the, you know, the pandemic, I think businesses were able if they wanted. And I don't know how many came even then. You, you know, I don't think it was.
I mean, I like anticipating problems, right? The bu- better we can make our ordinances, I think the better they would be. And I think that is a reasonable, um, protection, right? Or maybe mention screening if it's, you know, on a residential side, right? To kind of like keep noise going. Towards the main road.
No, not to cut you off, my apologies. Is there a punitive step to multiple noise violations?
Yes. I mean, at some point it gets taken to the district court and. I mean, some, a judge could always elect if someone keeps violating things to, to put them in jail. I don't know how often that happens.
No, I'm just thinking if, you know, what's the step in place if the problem presents itself? From the perspective of, you know, hey, so many noise violations and you get your, your outdoor seating pulled. As opposed to going to businesses and saying indoor can be open till midnight, but your outdoor, you gotta shut down at, you know, eleven PM or whatever it might be. It's, it's an extra step of operation. The restaurant has to anticipate that, you know.
That doesn't seem re- reasonable to have two se- I mean, just in general, like two separate closing times. That seems odd.
Well, isn't that what was, I mean, is that what kind of is being discussed from the perspective of?
I can't even imagine where we would really have that outdoor patio right next to residential.
And or open till midnight. I mean, most of the restaurants are done at ten. I mean, we're, we're, we're in the process of like making a little bit more of a nightlife, but we've got a long way to go. It's not, you know, it's not Royal Oak. Not that I'm not, I'm not downplaying the concern, I'm just saying.
I'm not offended. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there. And I'm thinking Berkeley Common, I don't know what time they close, but they're very close to residential, aren't they?
Yeah. Well, there's not, there's not many of our businesses that aren't, whether it's behind or on the side streets.
Separated by its parking lot.
So as a special land use, you would have been able to pull the outdoor permit as a condition of special land use. Um, there's a process you'd have to go through, but you would be able to do it. This way, the only way you could do something like that is if you have like a contract with the property owner. But I think that complicates things even further.
Well, and with sp- special land use, if there was a problem that we didn't anticipate, I mean, once, once it's approved, it's approved anyways.
Okay. So administrative. Annual renewal with a site plan as part of the application. Looking at noise nuisance, barrier free, et cetera, fencing and then.
Buffering.
Buffering. Okay.
And are we doing anything with parking or we just don't include this as usable space? That's another.
So. On the parking, um. It's one of two ways. Is that you can require it, you're gonna add more complication. And you're gonna add more parking. And you already have a parking problem. I, I think when I sat in Kristen's seat, eighty percent of the problems I dealt with were parking. Parking requirements, not, not parking need. No, no. Um, and, and your parking's kinda all over the place. I would, I, I, right now, what I would say is to set that parking aside. You're gonna be doing a parking study, so you have a better idea. And then, um, wrap that into when you're doing parking management. If you start to see a, a bunch of these come through, then it might be time to look at it. In terms of adding some parking provisions, like putting a moratorium on them, stopping them and saying, okay, let's make sure that we got the appropriate parking. But the other hesitancy I have with adding it as usable floor space is, it is Michigan. I sat outside during the pandemic in the cold in my ski pants. And, and downtown Northville drinking a drink, cause I really wanted to be outside, you know, really wanted to do that. Just have a drink somewhere else other than my home. But, um, it's not year-round space. So then you're creating parking for s- space that you're not using year-round. So I, I don't have a, I mean, I, I, I think these are all things to think about. And then maybe we can discuss that more when we come back. I can bring you some space requirements for that. And you can say yay or nay, you can take it in and out. Some of this is just picking and choosing and then cutting and putting it in.
And also, I don't know if there'd be that many areas where you'd have a, be able to have a large enough outdoor seating area to really put it, have an impact on the parking.
And every applicant then would have to go to the ZBA.
Potentially.
Yeah, so the answer is no, no parking. We don't want it as heavily as square space.
I mean, if we were talking about a huge outdoor space. But I can't think of anywhere where that would happen, so.
All right.
Are you good on that one?
I'm good on that one. Are you all good on that one?
Everyone happy? All right, so moving on to the DDA guidelines.
All right, um. Many of you have seen this twice already. Some of you, it's your first time. Um, so these are ordinance amendments to implement the downtown design guidelines. This is probably, um, the fourth iteration of it.
Yeah, from, from sitting in the other seat. Yeah, that's about where we are.
Right. Um, so, um, these were ordinance amendments that we brought in April. Um, after having a work session with the planning commission in March. Um, and at that point, then in April, we gave you a very long memo. Um, and these were the things where you said, we're comfortable with moving these forward. Um, and then we haven't gotten to them till now. So, and part of that is my fault and I apologize. So, in a nutshell, there are signs to reduce the percentage to twenty-five percent of window signs. Um, some requirements for outdoor lighting in non-residential districts to make it safer, lessen accidents. Um, also for parking lot location, adding pedestrian circulation improvements in parking lots. You've been doing that sometimes, um, at site plan review level and asking people to do it. This is putting it in the ordinance and telling them they need to do it before they start drawing the site plan. Um, the schedu- scheduled regulations, um. So in the Coolidge District and the Gateway District, um, you, it would allow parking in the front, the front yard and the side yard setback. Um, so we're just saying all parking should be in the rear. If they can't do it, then they've gotta ask for a variant. You'll figure it out another way. But everybody goes in the rear right now. Um, and then also, um, that instead of a setback for Coolidge and Gateway districts. Um, that's a build two line. So that says seventy-five percent of the building has to come to this line. Twenty-five percent can go back. Um, and that makes it more visually interesting building. When it's got, um, some variation rather than when it's just flat. Um, and typically also your doorway's recessed, so to have a hundred percent, um, is probably not architecturally feasible. Um, and, well, well, it is, but it's not gonna be the quality building that you want. Um, to, to do that and then to add the footnotes in order to make those. And then finally, um, to really re-haul your, um, standards for site plan review. Cause as you know, when you've been using them in the past two months, you've only got a very general, I think, six. Um, this adds a lot more things to look at it overall. But then also to link it directly back to the design guidelines for the areas in the DDA district. And the applicant has to answer and you have to evaluate how they meet those. So that's an explicit part of not only their design process, but your review process. So any questions?
When you talk about seventy-five percent frontage, you're talking about zero lot lines, correct?
This is the one where everybody likes it?
I have just a couple itty bitty comments. Okay. Um, so in the actual ordinance amendment one, on page three. So it's, um, one thirty-eight dash five two seven. Um, where we talk about the setbacks being allowed for resident, first floor residential use. Can we somehow add in there like a landscaped setback? I just don't want it to end up being like asphalted over and it was like you just set a setback. So on N. Way to do that, just to help, just make sure. I, I don't hear like, well, the, the ordinance was silent on that, so it ended up being, you know, all pavement or something like that.
Okay, so.
Parking lot location design, that section?
Um, under N, where it says, there's no setback to be allowed unless planning commission finds that the proposed setback shall be developed as a defined plaza, outdoor eating area or other pedestrian space. When a first floor residential use is allowed, a setback of up to ten feet shall be allowed.
Why don't you just, if, if I can interject, um, why don't you just have, when a first floor residential use is allowed, a setback of, of up to ten feet shall be allowed for the development of a defined plaza, residential patio or other landscaped pedestrian space?
That sounds lovely.
Fine plaza, outdoor seating area.
Or other landscaped pedestrian space. Cause I assume you'd be okay with like some brick paper patio area.
Yes, yes. I just want it to kind of like be pretty and not, yeah.
And still leave, and still leave the last sentence that's proposed.
Yes.
Yeah, tag that onto the last sentence. Basically just change the outside eating area too.
Okay, got it.
And then my only other comment is on page five. C two. Oh, when it's talking about, and, and this is more just like reading it and clarity. Um, provide high-quality durable materials such as, but not limited to stone, brick and glass. It's really hard to tell that that's a period because then it goes into the EFS, right?
What if I switch metal and EFS?
Probably will totally fix it, yes. Cause I was like, I realize it's not a comma, but the first two times I read it, it blended together in my brain, so, yeah. And that's all I have.
I got a couple things.
Okay.
Um, for, under the lights, I think it's, it's not listed in here, cause we're not changing it. But we call out, um, point five foot candles at a residential property line. That's unusual, I think, for most cities, isn't it? Should, should we change that to zero? Or is there a reason because we're smaller, it's just not feasible for somebody to do that?
Usually it's zero.
Usually it's zero.
Can we make it zero?
So where are you?
So it's under with the lighting stuff, which is the section one thirty-eight dash one forty-three.
So this would be a cleanup item, just kind of outside of the guidelines.
Yeah. If I may, I got another one of those too. Which is the, the standards. We go, after you go through the standards, you go through like a, what I would call that a site plan checklist. To get everything on the drawings that need to get on the drawings. Um, the very last item, the engineering one is, is worded kind of strangely. And that would not technically be correct.
Which, which, I'm sorry, which one are you?
That would be section one thirty-eight dash.
Six, seven, nine?
Yeah, six, seven, nine.
Six, seven, nine.
It's like the very last one, there's, there's a checklist and then there's the list of.
Oh, yeah. And which one are we?
It's number nineteen, stormwater engineering, including existing and proposed grading of the site. That, um, that item right there. It goes on saying stormwater calculations for a hundred-year storm. The drainage area on site that will detain the ten-year storm and a profile of the sanitary sewer. It's worded strangely because you're saying stormwater calculations for a hundred-year storm. And then the drainage area on the site that will detain the ten-year storm. I wonder if we could just refer to Oakland County standards?
That's what we're using. So I mean, this is just a holdover, we're not actually using that.
Like the other one, just kind of a cleanup of the verbiage in there.
Okay, so we would add something to section, it, it's one three eight.
Six, seven, nine.
No, six eighty.
Oh, six eighty.
Number, item nineteen. And that would be. Clean up to match. Kristen and I can work together to match what you currently do. Okay.
Uh, I think that, was that in our packet?
No.
No.
That wasn't in your packet.
No, it was, it's, I was trying to see what was in there.
Mine only goes to six, seven, nine.
Sorry, being difficult. Um, I was just going through the zoning ordinance and seeing like what, cause some of these are just a snippet of the whole section. So it's like, okay, well, what else is in that section? That's why I was looking at it.
Any other comments, edits, suggestions?
I'm generalized. I think it's good.
One, one item is on page six, um. Item five at the top, where it says, for commercial buildings incorporate clearly defined, highly visible customer entrances that face the street, using features such as. Does it aid, does it aid to y- add the word, uh, functional entrance that face the street?
Oh, I like that, yeah.
Highly visible, functional customer entrances.
I just, I think of like the, the retail along Big Beaver and Troy. Where those entrances are, they're technically entrances, but they're also now stock rooms with boxes in front of them. Because the parking is behind the facility and they have another entrance back there. It's just not what I would wanna see happen along our corridors.
Okay.
I've got one, quite a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. So for the lighting, on, I'm looking at the amendment cover letter. Not the actual text, but I think it's the same thing here. It's one thirty-eight, four thirty-three, six B. B six B, I guess I'll say. Uh, I'm just curious, so it says, where permissible commercial or industrial uses such as sales, assembly and repair. Like, do we have to list the such as? I'm just curious if, um, if there's a reason why those uses are listed specifically for commercial or industrial.
I think, um, those are listed because those are the ones that are most often lit, um, all night long. Sometimes that's, usually it's prevent left. So there's no reason that, that you have to keep the such as.
Would it be clearer if you, instead of such as, use including? Would it, would it be clearer if you, instead of such as, use including?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I guess when I read it, just sort of begged the question to me like, okay. Are there more that are, more uses out of those for some reason that don't, this doesn't apply to or something? I don't know, it just seems so special to call it out.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, then, one thirty-eight, two-two-two. Well, I gotta find my note, cause I marked it separate here, um. Oh, so this is just in the pedestrian connection portion. I was curious to, when there's the list of potential improvements. It goes incorporate striping, comma, calming devices, comma, and hardscaping, comma, protective lighting. Like, is that and supposed to be there, or what did that, okay. I didn't know if it meant something different, okay.
Oh, it was a good catch, thank you.
All right. Okay, then for the design review process, this is a more general question. On, um, I have to find the specific instance. So a lot of the new, um, texts, I guess, within here includes the phrase surrounding area. I was trying to, in my mind, think how, if I got a site plan, I would use this into what context the surrounding area would, would be.
And I think that allows us a little bit of ability to massage at that point. Something that might not necessarily meet what our vision would be. Or it doesn't blend well, right? So surrounding area could be just like the two buildings, or it could be a whole block. It kind of, I think, depends on the setting there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and I know this came up during the workshop, but the whole idea that if there's some business that has a site plan to develop a non, non-surrounding area look as part of their look for their business.
And I think what the idea of this is to make it tougher.
Right, right, okay.
Is that if it's really, really different from the characters surrounding area, that then based on the standards, you would have people already just say no?
But then we also have the ability to say yes, if we think somehow it fits in context. And I think current building was one, something cited currently being built, where there was some question on its context within downtown. Um, it, just because it's like, I, I haven't seen it fully, but there was some like concern, like, oh, it looks like too up north compared to like downtown Berkeley. You know, so like, that's where I'm just, I've been struggling still with these and we had that workshop. Like, how does something different ever come out of here if it's, if, if, if the discretionary, you know, checklist, designer checklist is to make everything conform to the surrounding area? So like, just that leeway. Surrounding area just stays in there, then it's fine for me and it's, but, but, but that, that was one, the workshop we had, it was, I think, that came up several times, I think.
Right. What, what was the surrounding area and then what, what is compatibility mean and things like that? And a lot of that, a lot of those are discretionary words where you have to, you have to take some judgment. But short of doing what's called a pattern book where you have architectural rendering and you say you want it, you want it to look this way, um, that's not necessarily, then that's the only way you get to the point where it's non-discretionary and you can say this is what we want. And actually what sometimes can happen with those too is that, um, Seattle's been quite a city to me that you can go and see when they had design requirements, you can see an era of building, like it's fifteen years and they all look the same. And, um, that's not necessarily what you've articulated or what your design, your downtown design guidelines have articulated. In fact, some of those ask for things to be a little different. Um, some of the design guidelines are asking for two, two stories or three stories. Whereas if you look at the majority of your corridors, it's more one story. Um, and so, I, I, you know, I think there's a balance in there and that's why some of the words are a little vaguer. More vague, vaguer is the word.
Yeah. No problem.
I was rolling with it.
And then as far as, um, it seems like there's a very repetitive, um, statement under each of these sub, um, checklist items. It's the very last one usually about following the, the DDA district, chapter five guidelines or something like that, design guidelines. It seems, I, word for word, I, I mean, I kind of was reading this very quickly and with that, that common sentence there and sort of citing the different chapters of the DDA, or the design guidelines. To what extent now do we need to actually have the ordinance and the design guidelines next to each other every time when we review a site plan? Every time?
Yeah, or, well, well, not necessarily you, but your staff.
Okay.
And if you use a consultant, yes.
Gotcha, okay.
If I would, you know, you, as a planning commissioner, yeah, it would be good to have it next, next. And also each one of those sentences at the bottom of the subsection cite a different thing. Cause if you go back to the, you go back to those documents, they have specific things for compatibility and transition. They have specific things for architecture. They have specific things for if it's a redevelopment or if it's a new development. Um, so those, part of our challenge, what, when we were writing these is to codify those design guidelines. They're so, um, specific, which is great. Um, but it's very difficult to codify in zoning again without making like a pattern book. Um, type of thing which you don't have, that, that's a long and, that's a, that's a lengthy. Oh, sorry, that, that's a lengthy process.
Cool, no, I mean, I'm good with it. I just, I'm trying to learn the ordinances, now we have another thing to, to study up on a little bit more.
I think, Willie, we also now have someone who's really fluent in the design guidelines on our commissions.
Yeah. Like front to back, with my eyes closed.
All right. So the next step for these is either for me to go back and revise and bring you a clean set? Or if you feel good with the revisions that everybody's listed, um, to have them co, go for a public hearing?
I think what we've asked you to do are fairly minor changes to it. I think it could come back to a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, are you good?
I'm good.
Everyone else good?
Yep.
Beautiful. All right, next is vape shops.
All right. On this, so we had a request, um, from a member of city council who was concerned. Um, the, a vape shop did open on Coolidge and has since closed. Um, but it was in close proximity to the high school. Um, and asking if there was a way to regulate it and specifically decided how marijuana provisioning centers were with the thousand foot buffer. Um, and when, looking at it really, there's two different ways to do it. Is, one is you could just put it in, only allow it in certain zones. Um, and with the experience with the marijuana provisioning centers, functionally, um, they only went, um, you know, they, they only went in the, they could only be in the local business, the Woodward, or the eleven mile zoning districts, once you drew those buffers. It allowed them in many other districts. Um, but, so you could take the same thing with the vape shops and just limit it to those districts. Or what you could also do is, um, have us, or you could go back and you could use the same buffer requirement, but you can also buffer them from themselves. Um, so that you don't have a cluster. So you could say that it has to be five hundred feet or a thousand feet vape shop to vape shop as well. Um, and many municipalities use that, so they, so they're not creating what's called a, you know, a sin district. So my questions to you, um, were at the end is, should vape shops be regulated in the zoning ordinance? We've had this request, but wanted to ask you the question. Um, if so, what's the intent of those regulations? And I'm asking that because that intent not only needs to be in the introduction to the ordinance, um, but it's helpful also i- to have it in the zoning ordinance itself, especially if there's going to be a separate section. Do you have a preference in terms of approach? Um, what other suggestions do you have and what other information do you need?
Do we, you list the, uh, different districts a vape shop could be in, could, could it, for all intensive purposes, be one district?
Yep, you could just limit it to one. You, you might have a little bit of a, you want to treat it the same, try and treat it the same as, as a similar use. You do define a tobacco shop and, but the main thing is that you, you prohibit those in the downtown. And then you really don't mention them anywhere else in the zoning ordinance. And it's very unusual to have a prohibited use in a zoning ordinance.
And, and, um, I don't know if there's been any market research on, um, you know, the amount of customers that come in, in and out of vape shop. But is that, is that information, do you have that information available?
No, I could look for it.
Cause I, cause I think it's more of a, you pop in, you pop out. It's, uh, I don't know, I don't have the experience with going to a vape shop. But, um, you know, I think it's just, uh, I feel like it's a, it's a quick transaction. Um, you know, one that doesn't really need to be anchored as a quote-unquote neighborhood business.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I would think that for that type of business to succeed, they want a lot of traffic going by. So that's why off the top of my head, I would suggest Woodward Avenue, the Woodward corridor. Limiting it to there, it's away from residential, it's by, uh, it's right on a busy arterial. And, um, it's away from schools.
I have a question. So my first thought was like, well, why don't we make it a special land use? Cause then we can prevent the clustering and make sure that it's not by a school, or if we want a daycare, or pocket park, or however we want that. Were you staying, straying away from that because we already allow tobacco shops and aren't treating tobacco shops that way? Or is there some other reason that we wouldn't want to make it a ban, a special land use?
So with special land uses, you're right that you can have all of these different regulations in place. But we want to make sure when you guys are looking at whatever vape shop comes forward, that you're applying that same standard to every single vape shop. So if you come and approve one within seven hundred fifty feet of a school, I'd say, and the next one comes and the commission's a little bit different and now it's only five hundred feet, or now it's seven hundred fifty feet away and you say no? I mean, it just creates a lot of room, I think, for reinterpretation of standards when each person comes forward.
And the risk of selective enforcement.
Yeah.
I, I guess, so a lot of places now sell vape, including gas stations or convenience stores, I guess I'll open it up to that. But, so what are we defining as a vape shop? Just, are we using the same thirty percent of, as tobacco, or we currently don't have that defined?
You could use the same, you could use the same definition structure as you do for the tobacco shop. Um, or, um, we've had a, one of our clients, Allen Park, actually, um, is in the process of adoption, adopting zoning ordinance regulations dealing with vape shops. And they made theirs just much more general and it said that the primary thing that is sold is vape. And then they, they defined that, vaporized products, and then they defined that. Um, there's a couple of the, the, the tobacco shop structure is tempting because you already have it. It mimics something. The con of that is that you're asking your code enforcement officer to go in and like measure shelf space. Um, and then that shelf space can change within a day or two or over a weekend. Um, so, yeah, and then what happens if the gas station does? Then they're not in compliance and whatnot. So you get yourself into, you, you can write yourself into a conundrum.
Right, so are there many vape shops that sell hundred percent vape? Probably not.
No, no.
I mean, they all sell other products, whatever that is.
Products, so.
We've, I mean, we've got cigar shops, right? I mean, there's one on Woodward, I think that's Berkeley.
The Smokies?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my concern in reading this is why would we treat this any different than we would treat a cigar shop or anywhere, uh, at the tob- the tobacco? Uh, I, I think it should all be treated the same. And if that means we amend the ordinance to affect all of those, then that's what I think we should do. I don't think, I don't know why we would, and maybe it's because I don't know much about vape, but to me, I, I think they're all the same.
Wow. Then you get down the line, is, are the marijuana businesses just the same too? I mean, there's differences, I think, so. It would be easiest to roll it in tobacco. I mean, is there any, is there any line to just say they're not allowed in any district if they sell more than thirty percent vape products?
No.
No?
You can't allow the land use.
I mean, but I do think there's a difference between like the party store that happens to sell cigarettes or vape products and, you know, a smoker shop that smells on, sells predominantly cigarettes or a vape shop that spell, sells predominantly vape products. Um.
Well, the concern is for kids going, high school kids going and buying vapes. The real problem is the convenience stores and stuff. Because if, if it's a vape store that's just vape, but it's on the other side of town, then the kids are just going to go to the gas station and-
But there's still laws that prohibit that sale, so whether it's-
Unless they're eighteen.
Correct. But then they could go drive to the vape store that's a thousand feet from, or walk to the store anyway. So it's, it's like we're limiting a business because, sure, kids could get it, but technically they can't because it's still a protected age limits and, I mean, it's-
I think the argument about the schools is historically it brings in the bad people. I mean, I think that's the his, at least that was the liquor establishment, that was the big concern. I don't know that that's necessarily a thing.
I, I don't personally think it's so much a problem with the kids buying it, underage kids. I don't think are going to go to the vape store and be able to buy anything. I just, I don't know if I want, I want a community where there's a vape store every other storefront is my concern. And I don't know if that's a, a concern or not, I don't know if there's much-
That's a hard one to enforce apparently, unless we set-
Well, unless we set the, yeah, well, if we do the, yeah, the buffer between, between them.
But currently they're allowed? Anywhere?
Correct.
And there's not a hundred of them in Berkeley?
Yeah, do we not treat this one like it was a tobacco store?
Retail shop?
It would be a retail shop, cause there's nothing that defines vape store.
So we're limiting one retail business?
The tobacco, you're, you're talking about one?
Uh, well, a vape shop and we're, we're having, we're thinking about having different ordinances for a vape shop rather than, a tobacco shop rather than a dress shop?
So you could, you could roll tobacco, tobacco and vape together. I mean, there are instances where you have regulations based on the type of shop that it is. I mean, the one that really comes to mind is adult use shops, right? Those are usually strictly regulated. So it's not unheard of to regulate a specific retail use. But right, you would be treating this different than a dress shop. And currently your adult regulated uses are only in the Woodward district. Um, and the tobacco shops are treated as a retail business unless they're called out. And again, the only time they're called out is a prohibited use in the downtown.
So there's the- Just the downtown zoning.
Just the downtown zoning district.
Cause there's the tobacco store on the northwest corner of twelve and Coolidge.
That's twelve mile district, not downtown district.
That's a twelve mile district. I, it, it makes sense to me to, to put tobacco and vape together.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so you put tobacco and vape shops together, how do you want to regulate them?
I think the distancing, so that there's not a overconcentration of them would be important.
Yeah, I agree. I, well, I think they should only be in certain districts and they should have a buffer. I'd pick both those options that you had on there.
And you can combine them.
Can we call them?
You said, please no. Thought that was a hint.
It was, there was a note in there.
Has there, has there been a big demand for vape shops to come to Berkeley? Has there, has there been a big demand for vape shops to come to Berkeley?
I mean, I, I don't think Berkeley is necessarily your ideal demographic for, you know, multiple vape shops or multiple smoking shops.
Although if you look at the statistics, there's one on Woodward, there's one on Twelve Mile, and there's one that was on Coolidge that closed. So that's three storefronts. Out of how many, that's pretty high percentage.
I don't know that it ever opened.
I don't think it ever opened.
Tried. So, I mean, from my perspective, that seems like a lot, three seems like a lot, so it does seem like there is, like.
And don't smoke shops sell vape stuff?
Right, gas stations, liquor stores, I mean, the competition's there.
Yeah.
I mean, and yeah.
I mean, so if you're limiting it, then what is your threshold, I guess? So that your party store isn't suddenly limited, or your gas station, you know, I mean.
I don't know, that's hard. Allen Park used a much more general definition, and I could bring that up, instead of having people counting shelf space. Um, and their attorney was comfortable with it. Um, so I could bring that back along with spacing, along with, if you just wanted to make the two, make sure that you're not making the two that are existing nonconforming, just only allow them in Twelve Mile and Woodward. Woodward, you have kind of a precedent there, cause that's where you have your adult regulated uses.
Right.
If you're but a thousand feet, I would need to.
See where it lands.
See, see where it lands, because we, you wouldn't wanna zone just so you could just have one. Um, so, that's my initial reaction is thousand foot buffer from schools and each other, um, on Twelve Mile District and Woodward District.
I'm not so much worried about the schools.
Yeah, I'm not so much worried about the schools either, but I don't think there should be one, you know, next to the high school either.
But they sell it at the gas station there?
There's a gas station.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, it's.
But if it's, if it's in Woodward, and if it's in the Twelve Mile District, it's not by the high school.
But I'm not worried about underage kids going in and buying. I'm, I'm, you know, it's the eighteen year old that's, hey, it's right there, it's on the way back from lunch.
But it's there now.
But it's there now.
Right.
Was it, isn't it twenty-one now for tobacco?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I thought they did switch it.
Yeah, I think twenty nineteen, yes, twenty-one.
I didn't know that.
Good.
I just wanna make sure that whatever our regulations are, they're not affecting our gas stations and, you know, liquor stores, or whatever, that may already have the product. And, you know, be within a thousand feet from another one.
Okay.
Is Greenfield considered? Would that be an opened up area for that?
Greenfield, Greenfield is still our anything goes district.
I know. Greenfield is your, your anything go, goes district, you could, you could add it there. Um.
But it's mostly residential.
Yes.
I mean, there are those two, two little business strip mall things going in there.
And we have the two medical offices that were approved.
I mean, so.
Sounds like we just went excluded on Twelve Mile.
Or the down.
Include it.
Included.
It's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah.
How far down on Twelve Mile?
Actually, I think on Woodward.
Where does the downtown district start then on Twelve Mile?
Hmm?
Where does the downtown district start on Twelve Mile?
I don't.
My point, I mean, yeah.
Centers, it works its way away from the theater to some distance.
There's a smidge on Coolidge too.
But, Commissioner Woods brings up a good point in that Woodward, if you just restricted it to Woodward only, that's where you have your adult regulated uses. So you're already just saying that this is the one place. And then what I could do is just look at the buffering and make sure that you could put at least two, two in that du- district, if they were buffered from each other.
But we're allowing marijuana shops to go in different places, but not a vape shop? Like a different, could we follow that or more of along where we allowed marijuana shops?
Then, then what you would do is you, the way that shook out was, again, the districts of, um, local business, Woodward and Eleven Mile, those were the only places where.
Far enough away from schools though, that was the concern from council.
So any of these would make the one on Twelve Mile nonconforming?
But they might not be a vape shop, they might be a tobacco shop.
It would be grandfathered in.
Yeah, yes.
It couldn't expand.
We're combining them.
Combining them.
But, but it's, I mean, making something a nonconforming use, it does also limit that property owner. No expansion, I mean, there's a lot of things that.
They couldn't expand.
Well, and if they, they could abandon it, they could, I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen where they would just lose it.
But I don't think, I think the vape shop is renting space. I don't think that's the, I think the, the shopping center is owned by a different entity, but right.
So as far as limiting it to Woodward, is that lumping tobacco and vape together then? That's what we're saying?
We, we, that's a given, so it was just where, and so I'm hearing like, I don't think we're gonna get to this answer tonight.
I, I feel like it's almost there.
You think it's almost there?
I feel like it's almost there too.
Okay.
I really thought it was.
Okay, I, personally, I think if we're putting distance, distances from each other, we're talking just tobacco vape shops, um, I think that is going to limit where it's gonna go in and of itself.
I tend to agree, and I get keeping it out of the downtown zoned areas, because we want a definite feel there of places that you can look in and see, and all of that kind of stuff. Um, I don't know that we need to kick it only to Woodward.
So are you saying eleven mile, Greenfield and Woodward?
I don't know, my personal opinion would be just make sure we have the distance requirements in there and where we're not to limit it to any particular.
That's kinda how I feel.
And by downtown, I mean downtown zoned, right, not DDA bordered.
Right, you would say downtown zone. I would also say, after looking at your downtown plan, I feel like the Coolidge District is like the downtown district in the way that it's structured and the uses in it. And I would say, I, I see those as very similar. So I would say, if you're not gonna allow them in the downtown, don't allow them in Coolidge. And then allow them in the other retail corridors with a thousand feet spacing.
Agreed, that's what I agree with. I agree with.
Yeah, it's more on what I'm thinking.
So like the other areas on Twelve Mile, yes, except for that middle area?
Yeah, what?
So are you saying that you would allow, you're thinking of allowing it for the other two areas on Twelve Mile, but not that little s- middle section, or are you talking about all of Twelve Mile, not allowing it?
So not allowing in the downtown section, there's a little section. There's like a gateway section that's at Twelve and, um, Coolidge. And that comes down, the not allowing in the Coolidge area which has the high school, which does Aquitat's library.
Right.
But, yeah, all of those. And then below that is.
Gateway.
Gateway. So, and Kristen brought up to me, like, what would you allow in the gateway or not? And my initial reaction is to continue to allow it in the gateway. And I think eventually what's gonna happen is your gateway areas are gonna match your master plan, and that'll. Right, as we go through the zoning ordinance rewrite that we keep talking about, um, this, these districts could change.
Right.
And we could be talking about this again six months from now.
So, I guess with that, why are we, can we just wait until we get a, is there a vape shop coming that's in question?
No, there's no vape shop coming, this was a specific council member request, so.
So can we just wait the six months and?
Well, I can't promise it'll be six months, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as a number. The idea is to do the zoning ordinance next year, but it's gonna be, you know, a year, year and a half process.
To get through.
Yeah. We could be talking about it in six months, but it won't be done for like two years. Let's say Woodward, Eleven Mile, Greenfield, local business, Twelve Mile, and gateway?
Gateway.
Yeah. With the buffering?
I think so.
Mm-hmm.
From each other?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need them or want them buffered from schools and each other, or just each other?
I think just each other.
I, I just feel like we could still get a business in here, in any of our districts, a retail shop that now wants to sell vape. We're not really fixing the, or, or addressing the request from council, I don't think.
So what I think you're addressing is, is not the request that could a high school student walk up to the gas station at the corner and buy a vape. I think it's more, um, what Commissioner Dolan was getting at, the perception that we have a high school and it's right next door to a vape shop, and it just, I think the question is, do you want a lot of vape shops here? Um, and, and where do you want them to be seen? Cause you're right, anybody, any store could start selling vape products.
They could call themselves a glass store, which is sometimes used for other things.
Right.
And they have vapes that are there, but they sell the majority of glass. And that would be allowed at the new Aquitat Center, right across from the high school.
Absolutely true.
So, I mean, I don't know if this discussion is really helpful of anything, except for saying vape shops shouldn't be in certain districts. Is that our goal? Or the request from council is?
I think it's a perception thing, more than it is, you can't really control whether a retail store wants to have a stand of vape products, cause, cause we really can't.
And I think it was unfortunately positioned in that, like, if you were coming away from the high school, it was like right there facing, so.
So I think the other thing we're doing here is then, since vape and tobacco are lumped together, we're essentially now rewriting the tobacco shop.
Mm-hmm.
Right, which I personally.
And we're gonna find a better definition, right?
Yes, it's a good opportunity to clean it up a little.
Yeah, I think combining it and modernizing it, I guess, with, it seems appropriate.
Well, I have more than enough to go on with that.
Do you feel like you have clear direction from us?
I have clear direction.
All right, um, and now we go to election of officers.
We should do that every couple of months.
Talk about vapes?
No, no, just a topic, just some topic, like outdoor seating or vaping.
All right, um, is there any great way for me to do this? I can just start leading it, right? Um, I'm okay staying as chair, would anyone else particularly care to hop in the chair seat?
No.
Very good job.
You're doing good.
Then I will nominate you as chair.
Second?
Support.
Do I, can I do a voice vote, or do we have to do roll call?
I think you can do a voice vote.
Do we have to say when it ends?
It's a one-year appointment.
Just a one year.
Um, who seconded that?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Amy. Um, I'm sorry, Michael, I didn't wait for you to respond, did you want chair?
I was thinking about it for a minute, I'll give it a few more.
Uh, who would like to be vice chair? Don't y'all run up all at once. If it makes you feel better, I've only been absent like two times in six years, so.
Oh, you totally jinxed yourself.
I can do it if nobody else wants it. Those are an awesome vote of confidence, yeah, I mean, it's fine, whatever it takes.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, you too.
And secretary, which is really a, a position and name only.
I can do that.
Awesome.
I nominate, uh, professor, er, professor. Dolan for, um, secretary.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Um.
You're third in line.
Right. If the zombie apocalypse happened.
Yeah, as long as we don't lose another foot and.
Um, all right, and then liaisons. Is there anything, any, you want, um, DDA, yes?
I can, I mean, if you have.
There anyways.
Right, I don't know if, I know you, most meetings with the event stuff, but it's, I'm happy.
That way I can pop in and out, depending on.
Yeah, then I'm happy to be the liaison to the DDA.
Okay. Is there anything anybody else is interested in, would like to take?
You said the chamber is Thursdays, not?
The third Tuesday of the month is the latest time that I was given, from six to seven. It may be different in December. I got the impression from talking with the chamber that they don't have a, like a rock solid, consistent schedule, that it may change sometimes.
Just, just as a preface, I represent six communities and two trails, so I go to a lot of night meetings. So I'm not saying I don't wanna go, I'm just saying my availability is very, Monday night, I'm, every single Monday of the month, except the fifth Monday, I have a regular meeting, so I couldn't do that. I have, um, on Thursdays, which looks like it's all that's left, right? Because I can't do city council and you're doing DDA, there's chamber and environmental advisory. And on the third Thursday of every month, one of my communities has a ZBA meeting, but it's as needed. But I don't wanna take a commitment that I might not, I, I don't know how committed you need somebody.
So a lot of these, over the past couple of years, haven't always been filled? Um, so we don't absolutely need, need someone? Historically, these are the committees the planning commission has sent liaison to more years than not. But if there's, if the, if the commission doesn't have the ability to, to fulfill that, so be it, that's happened in the past.
I could do city council, cause I generally am watching the meetings if I'm not there anyways, cause I'm weird like that. It's easy for me, um.
Do the environmental advisory committee, the third Thursday of the month at six thirty? Hello?
I, I can probably not do, oh, Tuesday. I, I have commitments, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, four months on, four months off. It's very hard.
And there is some crossover, we have a chamber representative at the DDA meetings who usually keeps us really updated. So there's the opportunity to kinda gather information then too.
And then maybe we can like send some note to them saying that we don't have somebody that can fulfill that. So if they would like to send somebody here, or information to us, like to share with us, that's cool too, right?
Yeah, we can let them know.
Or their minutes, they can send us their minutes.
Do all of them have minutes?
I don't know if the chamber has minutes, I, I would think, but I haven't asked.
All right. Somebody finds that they're interested and their schedule opens up for the chamber, let us know. Um, and on that note, do we have any liaison reports? Okay, um, Commissioner comments? Anyone?
I just wanna welcome Commissioner Woods. Uh, great first meeting.
Great, thank you.
Great chair. Good spot to sit in.
I, um, our master plan, is that in our planning commission, uh, online folder thingies?
The Google Drive?
I don't, cause I couldn't find it.
Yeah, if it's not there, I can put it in there, it's linked on the website, um, but I could put a PDF in the drive.
That would be easy or for, to find, cause I have gone to like look up it on the website, and I was like, ah, I wish it was just here.
Did you put the DDA?
Mm-hmm.
I have a copy, but I don't know if it's, says final draft twenty eighteen. Is that the final one? It is, okay.
Um, and then my other question is, where are we on the parking study?
So we went out with an RFP for the parking study. Um, we're hoping to select someone and get that in front of council very soon. Like, not the upcoming meeting, but maybe the meeting after that, or the one following, it would go to DDA too. Um, and then that would kick off, it's about a three or four month process. And we wouldn't be making any zoning ordinance amendments based on that. Just kind of like the precursor to our big rewrite, we'll get the study of the parking part done first. And they will make recommendations, but we wouldn't amend the ordinance yet.
Right. Did we, did we give them parameters, or did we kind of say, like, this is what we're looking, you know, this is what we're looking to do eventually? Can you do a parking study, and then they're gonna come back with how they think?
So it kinda worked both ways, we gave them some specific parameters in the RFP, and they kind of flushed that out a little bit more as to how they would do that.
Okay.
So it would go to council.
Cool.
And there would be public involvement as part of it too.
Perfect. Anything else?
I have a few things. The downtown master plan was adopted, so that was good. Um, that happened at the last. The downtown master plan was adopted, so that was good, um, that happened at the last council meeting. And at the last council meeting, there was also a first reading adopted to take the planning commission from nine to seven members. So you would have a full commission seated right now, currently we have two vacancies. Um, that's gonna go as a second reading at the October third council meeting, I think it's the third. Um, and then it would become effective, I think it's a week after. So you would have a full commission of seven members. Which is.
I think it's been so long since we've had nine.
I just can't even remember.
It's been a while. Yeah.
Sure helped meet quorum.
Right.
Yes, yes, it would.
I guess I do have one more thing because I'm sure there's tons of people at home watching. Um, but skeletons are invading our downtown right now, um, and we need some more help getting them dressed. So if anybody is interested, reach out to the Buckley Knights Facebook page or to our DDA director, Mike McGinnis, and we will get you a skeleton and you can creepify it or cutify it or however you wanna do it and we will get it out to decorate our downtown. And that's, I think, all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.